Good morning, everyone. We'd like to welcome you to the study session for the Mesa City Council for the morning of Thursday, October 3rd. I look and see all of our council as present and accounted for at this meeting. Item one on our agenda is to review our agenda for our Monday, October 7th, regular council meeting. So, Mr. Brady, is there anything on here that staff would like to make any presentations on?
Well, Mayor, just, no. We're going to request that item 6A be continued for two weeks. We're working with the developer and the owners around the, around this new development. So, we've talked with the applicant, so we'd like to continue till October 21st.
Okay. Sounds like a good idea, of continuing working with the property owners. Council, any questions regarding Monday's agenda? Mr. Freeman?
So, Chris, I asked a question on 4A, on Broadway Road improvements. I know in the past, we've talked about improvements in our older intersections, and this one here is in particular. I think we, a couple of years ago, we, we talked about doing the improvement, but it never materialized, I think, because of the costs and all the infrastructure inside the intersection itself. And being an old, maybe you could give us a review of that and what's going to happen, because I see it's going to be pretty expensive.
Yes. So, good morning, Mayor and Council. The item on today's agenda is the approval of the pre-construction services contract, so we can bring a contractor onboard to help us with this project and get us to a construction contract. This project has a construction cost of all in of about $45 million. Now, when looking at it, everybody might think it's a roadway project. About half of the project is utility replacement because of the more mature state of this quarter and storm drains. So, what you're looking at is a roadway project with a lot of underground work. The project, we originally bid the project, went out for low bids, I don't know, about six months ago, and it was problematic because it came in substantially higher than the monies we had to build it. So, we've taken a step back. We're hiring a C-Mark contractor to come in and help us bring it back into budget and get the scope right-sized for the budget that we have. What you see in front of you is what we're planning. It was difficult to show all the line work on this because of how big the project is. It extends from where we, many of you may remember when we did Mesa Drive a few years back. It kind of picks up where we stopped with Mesa Drive, and then it extends east past Stapley to a half-mile street spur. We also are taking a section of storm drain only down Stapley, which is what the purple line in. And you can see there's water, there's a little bit of flood irrigation. We are undergrounding electric on the north side. We've got poles in the sidewalk, which is problematic for ADA access. We are currently under construction, SRP is, on the east side of the alignment to underground their power. They started, I think, on earlier this fall, and I think they're to end in April, the first part of April next year, with their undergrounding, while we go ahead and work with the contractor to try to get this within the budget. You can see, it's very hard to show the line work for the road on this drawing, so I put a cross-section in. In addition to all the utility work, we will be doing a pavement reconstruct. We are moving the curbs out a foot and a half on each side to accommodate bike lanes and to get some more space in the road for those sorts of things. We're putting six-foot sidewalks on each side. We spent time with the neighbors along this alignment, talked to them about the possibility of gaining additional rideaway from them so that we could do more like some of the stuff we did on Mesa Drive with landscaping, et cetera. They were not interested in that. So, this is, this is where we are with the existing rideaway that we have today. We did narrow the lanes. These lanes are not our typical lanes, but they are as narrow as we can get them and still get a bus and a fire truck side by side going down the street, passing each other. So, there's been a lot of thought put into that. If you look down in the pictures, you'll see the north side of the street where we have power poles in the sidewalk, where we need to be able to get those out. You can see how close we are to some of the buildings in the rideaway. And then if you look at the picture on the right, you can see the bike lane. It is a major arterial reconstruct as well as a major utility project.
I will add that in addition to the work that Beth described, we are adding two pedestrian hybrid beacons along the corridor to allow for safer pedestrian crossing, you know, north to south along Broadway.
And are we doing any improvements in the intersection itself?
At Stapley and Mesa, I'm sorry, Broadway. Yeah, right turn lanes.
This all started back in, before 2020, right? When we were talking about prioritizing arterials and safety and congestion. And so, what happens is, once we prioritize this as one of those corridors that needed to be addressed for the safety and congestion kind of that becomes, are the top criteria, and once we identify the scope of the project, then we go into, okay, if we're going to be in there tearing up the street, now we need to look at, let's not just leave the existing older infrastructure in place. Then we start making that evaluation. And I think, along with the water and sewer that we typically would see, as you saw, I think that slide back with the electric utilities really became another opportunity that needed to be added to this project. So, yes, the project started off as a priority for safety and for congestion, but now we, we also add to that all these other elements of the infrastructure and the utilities. And then I think we've tried to address some of the other modes of transportation along the way. So, there, I mean, this is a big project. It's expensive, but these are, in a way, we've kind of added two or three other elements to what we originally started off with as just a street project, so. But I think it's what you would rather, we'd rather do it this way than build the street and then come back and tear it up to put the, fix the utilities or move the poles.
Well, I know this being an older intersection and those that drive through there, and I know I drive through it quite often, some of the new construction are, they're north of Broadway and Mesa Drive is new, and then you get to this compressed area with the intersection. And then, especially the older buildings on the north side of Broadway that get closer to the sidewalks, we have a lot of work to do there to make sure we do it right. I agree with Mr. Brady, we need to do it right the first time so we don't have to come back and do it anymore. What was the overall cost of this project?
So, the overall construction cost currently is $45 million, all in with design and rideaway and all the things we've had to do to prepare for construction. It's around $57 million overall. That's everything, all in. What's on today is just the pre-construction services contract.
Good. So, we're going to have to be prepared for more road construction on Broadway to Stapley, along with other parts of the city?
We are currently looking at coming back to you, starting in March, with GMPs. The first GMP will be to do some undergrounding of electric from the SRP lines to the houses. There are five residents who have overhead power that we need to underground, and SRP does not do that. So, we'll be doing that. And the second GMP will be long lead items. The next month and the following months will be the bulk of the work. So, next spring, second quarter.
Oh, fantastic. I think with the fiber work and the Central Mesa Reuse Pipeline Project and other things going, we're tearing up a lot of streets in our city.
People are not happy.
We're modernizing.
Oh, we're upgrading, so. No, thank you for the overview. I think it's important that everybody knows about what we're going to do, especially 45 million, 57 million, all in?
All in. We are still working on those numbers. Once we get this contract in place, we'll start meeting with the contractor. We've got some thoughts on how to reduce the cost, and that's what we're, that's what we want to spend the next few months working on.
All right. Thank you.
So, you said, are we moving curbs?
The curbs are going out on both sides of the road, a foot and a half, I believe, right, RJ?
Yes. Moving, meaning out, not in. And that's what allows for the addition of the bike lane.
How, and you're narrowing the lanes to, what is the?
A cross-section shows, they're different for each lane. The through lanes right in the center, you have, right in the center, you have the two-way left turn lane. That's 11 feet. Then each side of that, the through lanes are 10 and a half feet, and then on the outside, they're 11 feet. And that allows us to get all the mirrors cleared with the large vehicles that cross down Broadway Road.
And we're not comfortable narrowing the lanes further than what we're doing. That really is sort of, is.
That's kind of the, as tight as we can get.
And that allows for the six-foot sidewalk, so.
On each side.
Which is, what is it currently?
Four at best. It's, in some places, probably narrower.
Okay. So, and there's not a bike lane on Broad, in that stretch that exists right now?
And when we build the bike lane, we'll build that outside lane as just, it won't be a curb and a bike lane, so there won't be a lot, it'll be a solid concrete bike lane. And we do that to kind of take more, to make, make it better for the bicyclists.
We have to have a continuous service so where you can picture where the gutter or the curb matches up against the asphalt. That can't be part of the, we don't want those differing materials as part of the bike lane because they shift, you know, and it becomes a safety issue over time.
And what's the speed limit on, on that red light?
Zero.
Forty.
And is adding that bike lane on that arterial that's, what, one, two, three, four, five? Five lanes across? It'll be five or six lanes across?
Yes, with the two-way left turn.
Center turn lane, yes.
Okay. Is that in line with our, the Transportation Master Plan?
Yes.
Putting, putting the bike lane on, on that type of street?
Yes, it is.
Okay.
So, but because of the, the nature of the road, you know, many of our arterial roadways are 45, but we're not recommending increasing the speed limit, so.
That one's always been 40.
Yes. It's, you know, we, we looked at a lot of options, and the challenge we have on the west side of town is the existing rideaway and buildings right up against it, or parking for businesses and that kind of thing. Best Beth said her staff did reach out to the property owners, but they really were not interested in giving up any more of their property to, to, you know, add other elements to it, so.
Did you explore other routes for, for bike options as opposed to going down, you know?
Our general standard on arterials is to have bike lanes. We're always looking at other options to see where we can, you know, which way we can go. I'm not sure in this area that there are other options, because you're into neighborhoods. So, you know, some people will ride their bikes on the sidewalk, you know, and they can do that outside of downtown. So, you know, yeah. But we do have some core bike riders that like the on-street bike lanes. So, you know, it's, it's, it's.
Well, but as we've talked about before, that core is a, a very small percentage of bike riders, right?
That's fair.
So, we're building a bike lane, about 4% or 5% of the biking population, which I think is, is probably not optimal. I would, I would like to see us get to a point where we build them for the majority of people riding a bike, and if that means you don't put it on a 40 mile per hour arterial, maybe you, maybe you find a different route.
And, and we do that. When we built Mesa Drive Phase 2, which is from 8th Avenue north to Main Street, you know, we wanted continuous bike lanes, but we ran out of room, you know, and the bike community was very displeased that we didn't continue the bike lane through, you know, through the limits of the project. But that's a, a perfect example of if we wanted to have bike lanes, we would have been taking people's homes, because we would have been taking their parking and making their property effectively, you know, unusable, you know. So, I, I've met with some of the bike folks over the years, and I hear them, but I, what we talk about is when you're in the sort of the built environment, you know, it's not the same as building a Signal Butte Road out in, you know, you know, Councilmember Summers' district where you have, you know, it's greenfield property. Now, we had a lot of issues, different issues with that project because of drainage, but when you're in this side of town, it is more of a challenge.
Our typical standard, for instance, out on Signal Butte Road, would be 65 feet of rideaway from the center line to the edge of the rideaway, plus an eight-foot public utility easement behind it for the utilities to go into on a new street in, in where we have land. But what we find in the west part of our city is, we just do not have the land.
So, we do try to get as creative as, as the space that we have allows us to get. So, I really do think the undergrounding of the poles on the north side is a big help.
Substantial help.
Because it's a, it's a pain for people walking if they have mobility challenges, you know, on a scooter or wheelchair, you know, whatever it is, that, that, where we can do that, so we appreciate partnering with Energy Resources on that. There are larger 69 KV poles, those are the really big, you know, poles. Those we typically do not move.
No, we do not. You can actually see them in the photo here on the right side where my cursor is. So, that's actually 69 KV from underhung with 12 KV. We never underground 69 KV. It is financially very difficult to do. There's high heat gain in those lines, so they're typically never underground. In a few instances, they are, like when they've done some freeways, but it's, it's very costly. So, but the 12 KV is, our standard is to underground 12 KV where we can. I will tell you, the costs, the electric costs kind of went very high on this. It's an interesting area because the electric system switched at Stapley from SRP to City Mesa Electric. And so, as you get into the city of Mesa Electric, it's on both sides, it's very costly to underground those lines. So, right now, we've included the north side, I believe, with, we have plans for the south side, but we're going to wait and see if we can get it to be financially possible.
So, you, the, the sidewalk on the, on the north side, or the south side doesn't change? Is what you're saying?
No, it, it does change. We, we bumped the curbs out, like I said, a foot and a half. So, then we build a new sidewalk six-foot wide on that side as well.
Okay.
So, there's help, but I just don't want to overstate that not all the poles are going away. It's where it makes financial sense. And SRP is actually currently undergrounding.
Yes, they are, and they will be through April. They're out right now. It's very slow going. There's a lot of things underground that most people don't know about.
Yeah, I imagine. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Mr. Freeman?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Well, I was going to say, if we're going to put some bike lanes there, which is great, could we consider reducing the speed limit down five miles an hour? I mean, is that a consideration? Maybe go through TAB?
I can ask our staff to review it. One of the things we find with speed limits, and I've been having this conversation a lot with Councilmember Groff, actually, that simply reducing the speed limit doesn't slow speeds. You have to physically change.
It's a feel-good moment.
Of, of the roadway. I'm happy to have our staff take a look at it, you know, but I know, we've had discussion on different roadways in different parts of the city, whether 45 is appropriate or 40 is appropriate. I think 40 is a good limit, but we're happy to review it to see.
I think we should just review it because we're more in a residential area, and it might be more conducive to that, and maybe run it through TAB if you want and see.
We would ultimately need to, depending on, on the recommendation. I have staff that are smarter than I am that we, that perform those things, so.
I think if we continue to do this around the downtown Mesa area, it might be conducive, again, to reduce our speed limits by five. Maybe it won't change the habits of drivers, I understand that, but at least it's there.
Yeah, it's something we're going to be talking about as we continue our work in our comprehensive safety action plan. You know, we're looking at, at, you know, locations where we've had serious injuries or fatalities. Speed reduction is a, a method for that, but usually it's in conjunction with, with something else. We'll take a look. We're happy, we're happy to review it again.
All right. Thank you.
Other comments? Oh, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry. Thank you for making these additions. I know this has been under design and consideration for a very long time, and, you know, getting the sidewalks to be extra, and getting the bike lane continuous, getting the electric underground is huge. There's been complaints by residents of the consistency of electric when there's storms and such like that, and it gets it out of the pathway on the sidewalks. So, I think that's really good. On the bike lanes, I appreciate this is all concrete because not only is it safe for, for the bike rider, right, doesn't have to straddle asphalt and, you know, concrete, but it's a visual too, right? It appears, when you have asphalt in the bike lane, the driver thinks actually his field is a little bit larger, so this is kind of tightening up that visual field. Is there any time, especially this is about four, four and a half feet, they do some kind of the tabs, you know, how you have those or some kind of barriers?
Something to delineate that there were.
Yeah, you know how there's the tab sometimes?
Yes.
When, you know, you put it on the ground or something that are flat and it can be driven over, but they're kind of a reminder that you've gone too far.
Well, the good news is, as Beth has explained, that we're really still, you know, just bringing in the contractor to start pre-construction services, so we can certainly take a look to see what happens.
I don't know, certainly best practices on that, because this is a very high area for people who are walking and biking.
Yes.
As well as in cars, it's very busy, and, and driveways, it seems like every so many feet, it's, it's, it's really hard. And then I realize that, so we don't have any more rideaway to provide any landscaping, any shade and stuff like that. In this area, we're working with Trees Matter and the American Forestry to, with residents and planting trees throughout. I don't know if there would be a way, maybe they could maybe work with the businesses and say, can we plant some trees in the front of your property here? And, you know, like they're doing with residents, and I don't know, it might just be a way to get a little shade there without giving up land.
That's something we could talk to environmental about. If they're city-owned trees that we maintain, we have to have an legal right to access them. So, you know, unless they, well, there's Scott, maybe he'll help me out.
Yeah. Well, somehow we're working with residents and doing it on their property and teaching some skills to maintain it. So, we surrender the, you know, rights to that property, not using it as a rideaway, but ways Scott will inform us.
Well, good morning, Mayor, Council. On the 24th, actually, we are going to be back to talk about trees, and there is some outreach we're already doing, and not exactly in this location, but at Reed Park neighborhood. So, just kind of on the other side of Stapley from where this project ends, that I think what we're looking forward to, excuse me, is to having that discussion with council and kind of getting some direction from, from council on what you would like to see. But our urban forester has been doing a lot of outreach out into neighborhoods, and that's one of the things that we'll be discussing on the 24th.
Yeah, I don't know. Just putting it out there is maybe an option, and of course, it's not mandatory. They don't have to have the trees, and maybe it doesn't fit, and I know. And especially with getting the electric underground, that's going to be able to open up some more spaces on, on parts where it wasn't, didn't make sense before because of the overhead. So, anyway, just, just a thought to somehow get a little bit of shade and make it feel more inviting. And anytime you have trees along streets, it makes it feel smaller in a way to drivers. It makes the area fill in, and they're, usually will drive at a more reasonable speed when they feel there's borders on that. So, I don't know, just an idea to do that, but. And I think because we have so many driveways, medians don't make sense in this area.
They do not. This is really, the west part of the city, there are just driveways all along the arterials because it wasn't part of the design standards in those days, how we managed driveways and intersections with small streets.
Yeah, so. Any creative ways we can think about shade along this corridor? It'd be wonderful. This is a targeted area that, you know, senses track that, as far as creating shade in trees and such like that. So, as we go along, we'll look maybe at those opportunities and work with business owners or, or residents to see if we can do something to encourage it. Thank you.
Well, thank you. That was, that was a lot of great discussion. We have been talking about doing this portion of the Broadway Corridor in West Mesa, it seems like, for years, and so it's, I appreciate that we're pulling the trigger on it. I, I think we all hear some complaints from our constituents about the amount of road construction that we have. I'm afraid I have zero sympathy for those complaints because, I mean, yes, it's, there's, it's an annoyance, it's an inconvenience, but I think it's the sign of a healthy community that is maintaining its streets. So, I, I love driving on freshly redone streets in older neighborhoods, so it'll be worth the, the pain.
I think, I think, I think you do a really good job of this through different departments, but just the more communication that can get out to people as to why we're doing things, because a lot of people just don't understand the complexity that's happening underground, like you have said. And so, I think people are like, we just had construction, we just had, this was just torn up. Why didn't they do? I mean, I, we hear this all the time, right? So, just as much communication as possible to just help people understand what exactly we're doing and why it's complicated and all the different, you know, elements that go into why we have to do it. So, I don't know, because we, we all get to be part of these conversations, so we understand what's going on. And I just don't think the average resident understands, so.
Mayor, Councilmember Spillsbury, we'll definitely do that. Kurt and his staff do an outstanding job of that. I will say, this is a two-year project. It's 24 months of construction, and my experience has been, after about 12 months, people start to get really tired of barricades, so. And I do understand that. We do everything we can to mitigate it, but we will be talking to people, and still, we've been talking to them now for about three years. We'll continue the conversation.
But we try to, we take the opportunity to coordinate with our utility departments, which is why.
We do.
There's the electric component as, as well as some water work, because the worst thing is for us to go in and rebuild the street only a year or two later to have, whether it's a city utility or a non-city utility, come in and turn that same street up. You know, sometimes the private utilities don't always want to work with our schedule, but we do try to coordinate our projects as best we can so that we're not ripping streets up multiple times, so.
I think even that, right? Like, helping people understand that it's not always the city of Mesa that's doing it, right? That there are different entities that are digging up the streets and stuff, so.
Yeah, actually, a lot of the barricades you see right now is because of the fiber that's going in across the city, which is obviously a council priority, and we work together, you know?
All of us do.
You know, because Scott's, Steph does the locates for the underground utilities, or it's the best staff is overseeing the work of the barricades, and so, you know, that's, that's a big one right now.
Right. And you just, when you're out driving around, like, you see different logos on different trucks, and like, it's impossible to decipher what's contracted through City of Mesa and what's not, and who's doing it.
And we don't expect people to know when they're driving down the street who's, who's doing it. We, we can usually tell based on the type of equipment we see, whether, you know, what it is, or, you know, but we do have an, an act, a map that we work hard to keep as up to date as we can, that you all have access to through the city's website, you know, for barricades. It's not perfect because it'll list expiration dates of, of permits, but sometimes contractors go long. I know this is a conversation we've been having with several council members, you know, but at, at least it's a resource, you know, and if people want to know what, what's going on at this location, you can just click on the map, and it'll tell you who's got the permit and generally what it's for, so.
There is one more thing I'd like to point out. This project does have a substantial storm drain each component. Mayor, you will remember, 10 years ago, when I met you for the very first time, newly elected, we were standing out in the middle of knee-deep water in many parts of West Mesa because over the years, they built and they didn't build with storm drain facilities. So, we've built a number of storm drain facilities. This is a key part of it, this, this connection to this pipe. And I want to point out and give my staff some credit here, we work very closely with the flood control department. The storm drain going in here is about $3.8 million. Flood control has agreed to pay for 65% of that, so we will be getting, on the order of $2.25 million back from them for building the storm drain. So, I just want to give my staff some credit because over the last 10 years, they have sought those grants, and we have fixed a number of significant issues.
I appreciate you, you sharing that because I, we, we are committed to the older neighborhoods in Mesa. There are some issues, as was indicated.
There are issues.
We all have maturity issues that we can relate to, right?
Yes.
So, the fact that this, that these neighborhoods are going to continue to be vibrant and, and sustainable and not suffer, you know, flooding every time we have a major storm is going to be great for the, the health of that part of Mesa. Council, I'm sorry, Mr. Summers?
Interestingly, we're talking about Broadway Road because when I had a, did a Broadway Road in my district, you remember?
Yes.
The project? So, it was a flooding project, but it was the last bit of inverted crown in the city. So, the water, instead of going to the side, went into the middle of the street, generally where the 202 is now. So, it's interesting that we're still talking about Broadway Road and how to finish to, so that it, it doesn't flood. This, this conversation actually is a really good segue into what we're going to be discussing next when it comes to transportation and the Transportation Master Plan. But I do have a lot of empathy for the neighbors because I, you know, southeast Mesa is, is growing, so we have most of this, a lot of the city that needs new and upgraded infrastructure. Ours are narrow roads, and a lot of the growth is happening down there. And it's been a point of frustration that everywhere you turn, there's yet another construction project going on. The, the difficulties in, in some instances, the one that RJ and I have constant conversations over is, is. over is, is Williams Field and Signal Butte. And the problem is, that's not a city project, right? That's being done by private, two private entities.
I think, aren't there three?
I think there are three at one point.
Three private entities plus the utilities, all the infrastructure. And this goes to the point of making sure that we communicate well. What are we doing to accelerate these programs? To force these things to get done in a reasonable amount of time? Because I do think there is a public safety issue to this. One was, using my example, the crews, I don't want to say abandoned the project, but there was a long period where they weren't working on it and they left a trench in the middle of the road, right? They go into lanes and you can make no left turns from time to time, or what do frustrated people do? They ignore the signs, they make an illegal left turn, and that creates a public safety concern right here. So, you know, it's, it's one thing that we need the projects, it shows growth, it's necessary. When it's done, it's going to be beautiful. But if it's extended beyond a reasonable period of time, it's going to create public safety concerns. So, what are we, what are we doing to try to tackle that?
Something to talk about.
For this project and others.
So, Mayor Councilmember Summers, the, within the last year or so, we brought back a fairly significant set of increases in barricade fees with the focus on arterial streets, you know, because that's where we tend to get most of the complaints. So, I think we've had some success with that because we are now on the higher end. And so, we structured it in such a way that, especially if it's longer-term closure, if that's where the fees really start to go up, you know, for temporary traffic control. So, again, I think we've had some success with that. But in a case like Williams Field, you know, we've, you know, we're as frustrated as you are, you know? And it's been a challenge because of the multiple developers, therefore multiple contractors, you know, within the same, you know, workspace. So, that's, Steph has been doing some research in what other cities do.
Yes, so, Councilmember Summers, I worked in another, for another agency that had some tools in place to help us. So, it's something we're considering right now and that we'd have to have a conversation with the development community about. We just completed research on what other cities do. Right now, as the person with the authority of the ride, over right-of-way, I am, the only tool I have is to shut them down, which is not productive. So, but in other cities, they do have instruments that they require be posted by the contractors before they start at work in the right-of-way. Bonds, letters of credits, escrow accounts, so that we have a financial tool that if we do have to shut them down, we can call the bond and then go complete the work. So, you know, there are tools like that we are currently considering. We've been in conversations with Deputy City Manager Hirschberg and I provided, my staff did some research on what cities are doing what. And so, you may see us back to have those conversations with you in the future as, as a potential code change, but it's just something we're investigating.
Yeah, and I, I appreciate those efforts too. And I know the last few years have been difficult. There's been, you know, human capital shortage of qualified folks to do the work. There's been increases in inflation. We've seen prices double on projects like this, and I'm not exaggerating. And the private sector is facing those same inflationary and, and human resources challenges that we are. But we need to do something to make sure that we're spurring these projects along because they're absolutely necessary. And at some point, we are going to go back to our voters and say, we need more street bonds, right? That's not imminent, but we're going to, I know we're going to need some more of that. There's some more street stuff going to be on the ballot. And if we get that frustration, not only is it a public safety issue, people are going to go, you know what, I'm done. I don't want to drive through this anymore. And that wouldn't be great either. So, the more we can do to help facilitate moving these projects along and showing people that we really care about how long they stay in traffic, the better I think we'll be. Thank you, Mayor.
I think we've got a good start on the next agenda item. Can we just?
Well, I was going to say, I didn't know Broadway Road was a conversation.
So, thank you very much. Look forward to 24 months of conversations with folks about Broadway Road.
Yes.
Adam Chuay on our agenda is the presentation on our transportation master plan. So, we'll rearrange the deck chairs slightly here.
Yeah.
Were there any additional questions on Monday's agenda? All right. Great. Gentlemen, thank you.
Mayor, Council, good morning again. Continuing on the transportation theme, we are here to discuss the, where we stand with developing and close to completion of the, what we're calling the 2050 Transportation Master Plan. With me this morning is Eric Gudarian, who is our Assistant Director and oversees our traffic engineering group. So, what we'll talk about this morning is what's happened since we last met, what's new in the 2050 plan versus the current transportation plan, and what's next in terms of moving towards implementation. So, since we last met, last met, we have developed prioritized, prioritized needs for each travel mode. We've developed some conceptual street typologies. These are concepts that could possibly be incorporated into design of future projects, whether they're privately or publicly built. We have developed an executive summary. We've continued our public outreach. We've, we've done this, and I really want to credit our staff for this. They've done a significant amount of public outreach. And this is while we're doing public outreach on the safety plan as well. So, our staff have been very busy at events and trying to get the word out. So, I really do appreciate the work that we did. And we want to get your feedback so that we can finalize the revisions and, you know, complete the final plan. So, please ask questions as we go and Eric will take us from here.
Good morning, Mayor. City Council. Before I jump into, to a lot of this, I, I really want to highlight, we hired a consultant that's been working over the last 18 months, Kittleson. And we have staff members here in the, in the audience, Sabina and Mark, I especially want to highlight, that have spent hundreds of hours on, on this plan. And, and we, we think it's, it's a really great product. As RJ mentioned, we've, we've done a lot of public engagement throughout the process. We, we started this project back at the beginning of, of 2023. The final phase of public engagement was to, to share the draft, document the, the draft plan with, with the public. And we did that essentially the month of July. We received quite, quite a few comments. A lot of them were editorial and, and, or, or correcting words, but, but we also had some good feedback that, that we've included. I think not only did we get a lot of feedback from the public, but we, we shared this with all the internal departments to the city and received quite a few comments and, and it has been really helpful. As you know, we've been part of the general plan process. The transit master plan is, has, has been going on at the same time and, and we've really been trying to coordinate. So, not only are we saying the same thing, but we're, we're all moving in the same direction. I think what's exciting is the, the horizon year for our transportation master plan is 2050. And yet, that, by that time, our, our previous transportation master plans have really been looking at building, building, building. Mesa's still growing. By 2050, you know, we're, we're looking at, at having a complete transportation network. What, what sections are we missing? So, what we did, some, some new concepts for, for Mesa into our transportation master plan is, we looked at each of the transportation modes that happen in the city. We looked at where gaps are, are, are happening and we've identified those each individually and then layered those on, on top of each other as we start to look at priorities and needs throughout the city where, where those overlap. So, we looked at a pedestrian network, a bike network, the transit network, a freight network, and a vehicular network. I think this is one of the, the more interesting or, or better things that have come out of our transportation master plan is, instead of trying to look at Mesa as, as one Mesa, we created travel sheds throughout the city. And there are 11 different travel sheds and they're based on not only geographic area but demographics and, and travel patterns. And so, what has been really helpful with that is we've, as we've moved forward and, and hopefully, as you've seen in the draft document, we've identified different projects, different priorities. As we did our public outreach, we categorized the public outreach by travel shed, we, as we asked for their zip code and, and their address so that we could see what the priorities were in, in each travel shed. And so, in our final document.
Let me ask you on that one.
Sure.
So, if you go back a slide, so US 60 corridor is a particularly travel shed and I wouldn't disagree with that, but why is Mesa identifying that? My fear would be confusion for folks who read this, that we maintain a freeway and we don't. So, why, why is this identified as a specific corridor?
So, I, no, I appreciate, good question. I think what we have found is all the interchange streets and the land use types that are all along the baseline and southern are, are very similar. You know, there's, there's more in common at Alma School and the 60 and Power in the 60 or even, you know, Signal Butte in the 60 than maybe some of the, the surrounding land areas.
So, it kind of ties it, you said, we're, we're doing this as part of the general plan. It ties it a bit to the general plan. Because this, this seems more like a Mary, our, our planning director thing, because there's opportunities for some, some densities here and reuses around the malls. I know Fiesta's working on one and Superstition will likely to be the other. So, I can see where this would be a planning tool. I, I just want to be careful that we, we are, as a council, are not responsible for the disaster that is the US 60.
And we do have to, as Councilmember Summers, Mayor, we do have to explain that to folks sometimes because, again, we don't expect people to know where the lines are, you know, and all that. But, you know, we don't get, we get some calls about the main line of the 60 itself. Typically, what we'll hear from folks is about the interchanges, you know, because we maintain the signals, but ADOT still maintains the, the property. ADOT has been trying to hand that off to the city for us to maintain those interchanges and we have consistently for years said, no. We don't want it. We're not going to do it, you know? So, but there, there is a delineation. I really liked the, the travel shed concept that was first presented to me because I recognized, I said, not all Mesa's the same, right? Obviously, we're a large city covering a lot of, covering a lot of ground and what might be needed, say in Dops and Ranch, is different than what is needed in southeast Mesa, so.
Okay. I, I don't mind, it's just, it's just making sure that people understand. It's a little bit more in Mary's forte than it is maintaining streets because it's.
And our staff meet with Mary's staff every week. This is on the development side, but they, we do try as best we can to coordinate what we call the offsite improvements, which are the public roadways and that sort of thing to make sure that it's working with what's proposed onsite, which is the private development, so.
So, as you'll, in the document for each of the travel sheds, we have a multi, multi-page description that, that goes through kind of the demographics of the travel shed, the travel needs. And then we highlight for each travel shed, the projects that are, are recommended coming out of the transportation master plan in a near-term, midterm, and, and long-term range. Also, as we, you know, we, we've heard multiple times as we've gone through the general plan, that land use and transportation are, are tied hand in hand. So, we're trying to give ourselves a, a few more tools. The street typologies, it's actually going to be an appendix to the Transportation Master Plan, but it, it's a start for us to look at different cross-sections for, for roadways as, as we travel through different land use areas and, and I think will be a helpful tool as we move forward. And then lastly, what we've identified as corridors of opportunity, just highlighting as we've looked at travel patterns and traffic volumes, not only existing traffic, traffic volumes, but traffic volumes in, in 2050, we've identified streets that have, that are going to have significant land use changes or have significant capacity and identified locations that, you know, the, the street, if needed, can, can be reconfigured. And so, we've identified that. And we looked at functional class land use. We looked at what we have for right-of-way today so that we can identify future CIP projects when needed. So, as we're coming to the end of the transportation master plan process, it's, it's not the end of transportation planning. This is actually, it's just one tool that'll help us define projects over the next 10 years, whether those projects are, are city CIP projects or private development projects. So, really, with, when we're talking about implementation, there's three important things that, that we're going to be looking at. We're, this is going to be a tool that helps us prioritize our needs. I'll show kind of public comments. We, we don't just have an Excel spreadsheet of Excel, of public comments anymore that, that's helpful. And we also have a great progress checklist that we've developed. So, prioritized needs, the consultant has, has helped us to, to look at what our near-term, you know, really looking at the next five to 10-year needs are, are midterm and, and long-term needs. This is, is one tool that we'll use when we're developing the CIP. We'll also use, RJ has mentioned the, the comprehensive safety action plans, another tool that we'll have.
Just on that. Good day, Mayor.
Sure. You can see from this map by, the issue from the previous discussion that we had of why it's so important to move projects along is, we have a lot of projects in downtown. Those have narrower streets with a lot of traffic count. But when you look at my district down south, that's a lot of planned and needed work in the district. All right, so that, that's where a lot of this frustration comes in. So, timing that, having the tools to make sure that those things move along are, are going to be incredibly important in, in the, over the course of the next decade.
Mayor Councilmember Summers, we agree. This is not part of the future plan, but to give you an example, we are going to be going to construction in 2025 to add capacity to Ellsworth Road. It's the busiest road section in the city, you know? So, the project is from the city limits at Jermaine Road all the way up to Ray Road. We did not want to put that project in construction until we had another north-south road, you know? So, that's why Signal Butte was built first. We wanted to have another way for people to move, you know, north to south because it's going to be rough, you know, for a while while we're doing Ellsworth. And if we didn't have that additional north-south capacity, it would have been even worse. So, it's, it's, it's not perfect, but we do try to coordinate timing of our projects. So, one, they're not all in the construction at the same time and two, that we're still giving people options, you know, when, when we're doing our work.
And what about the east-west down in that area? Because there's, there's some significant east-west. I don't know what the traffic counts are for the east-west. I suspect they're going to be picking up at some point, given the development that's having, happening in Pinot County, even folks in Johnson's Ranch. So, the 24, that's also a freeway, so that's not ours. But you have the, the airport, so that blocks east-west travel quite a bit. So, it really comes, kind of comes down to Elliott and Warner, right? But Warner dead ends at the canal.
Correct. So, Elliott is currently, we, we did the first phase, which was Ellsworth East to Signal Butte. Our engineering department is currently working on design of Elliott from Ellsworth West to Sossaman.
Right.
Because of the growth on that side, you know, of Ellsworth. Warner, you know, that is identified as a proportion of nine projects. As we briefly talked this morning, the biggest expense is going to be the bridge.
Yeah.
Because you have to go over the Maricopa floodway.
Right. So, under, under short-term, if you look at the key on the bottom, there's a, just a square with a number sign in it for a bridge crossing. And that would go roughly where number 60 is. Right. We could even insert that possibly. And you said there's funding potentially in one of the propositions on the.
Right, but it's, just, just being upfront, it's going to be a very, very expensive project.
How much?
Well, as I said, the bridge by itself is probably 50 to 60 million dollars.
Is that a problem for that project?
Yeah.
Does it cost that project, it's almost as cost, what it costs us to do, we set aside money to do the entire rest of the city's projects. And so, unless it rises.
For one bridge, yeah.
Unless it rises, because it's, it's that part of the floodway is just so wide.
So, yeah, Gilbert, Gilbert is currently has a project to build over the, the floodway on Acateo Road, and that's a 70 million dollar project right now.
Yeah, and, and that would help.
That's right.
Yeah, that would help tremendously, but I think this just goes to, to show the cost of, of how these things have escalated over the past few years. I mean, that, a lot of folks asking for that bridge, I think it would move traffic a lot better, particularly some of the industrial traffic that's down that area. Probably, it's, but it's a 60 plus today.
And I think for the bridge, that's not the whole.
That's not the road, that's just.
It's a 100 million dollar project.
Yeah.
And I think that's why with Mesa moves, we chose to do Sossaman Road because it connects down to Ray Road. It's not, it's not as direct of connection, but it was a lot cheaper to do.
Okay. That's, it's a math problem. Thank you.
As I mentioned before, we, we've had a robust. As I mentioned before, we've had a robust public involvement process, you know, and our consultant has developed maps for us that map the location for each of the public comments that they have and what type of comment was it? Was it a transit comment? Was it a vehicular comment, bike ped comment? We'll continue to use this and refer to this. We've provided all the information from the Transportation Master Plan into our consultant that's doing the safety plan so that we can just continue to build off of all the public comments that we have. Also, I think importantly is, in previous Transportation Master Plans, we'd set out goals, but we didn't necessarily have an action item checklist to do. We've developed this that over the next 10 years, we're not going to get to each of these actions in the next six months, but we have action items to help us be much more successful with our goals. And so we will be tracking this, evaluating this. It's our goal to report back to the Sustainability and Transportation Committee on an annual basis where we are with the Transportation Master Plan and what's moving forward and what we need help with, right? And then also, I just want to, I want to make sure the Transportation Master Plan does not sit on a shelf and collect dust. Our staff uses it on a daily basis with development-related issues as we're planning out the capital improvement program. We do use it and so we're looking forward to having this. And I think our next steps really are, we want to hear feedback from the whole council and we'll incorporate that into a final plan and then here at the end of the year, we'll bring the final plan for adoption to council at a, at a city council meeting. With that, we'll take any questions or comments.
Thank you, Ms. Spilsbury.
So I know it gets, thank you for all of this. I know it gets really confusing, I think, for the public to differentiate between all these different master plans and all the different questions that are being asked and what goes into what. So, and there's a lot of overlap, right? So did you guys have recorded, like, what percentage of people contributed to the, you know, gave feedback or comments to your particular master plan? Like, how many comments you got?
We would have, Councilmember Spilsbury, we would have the number of comments, both for this plan as well as for the Safety Action Plan. Yes, we can.
I guess like, so is, do you feel like you got really good citizen participation? Did you get 100? Did you get 10,000? Like?
Let me just say something real quick about that. It's, you know, it was interesting, we were so, you know, even when we did the general plan, we had 10,000-plus, you know, participants, almost 20,000, I think.
Yeah.
And yet, when we polled it across the whole city, most people had not heard of it. So we have to be, I mean, it's not to say that, I mean, there's a lot of work. And remember, the Transportation Plan was out, they were, the staff was there during the general plan discussion, so it's not isolated to just being about the Transportation Plan. What we find is we can't, it's hard to like major success of penetrating, kind of getting into the minds of the public by just, even just social media. Because there's a whole lot of our population that doesn't necessarily use that, but that doesn't mean we shouldn't do it. It just means we have to keep finding different ways beyond just showing up at a town or community meeting or whatever. And so we're trying to explore other communication or other outreach efforts that are not, I mean, is social media? Yes. And we kind of get into that cone and we all think that's where the world is, but then we go out and do, you know, the kind of survey with phones and other things and it doesn't resonate the same way. So we're trying to explore ways beyond, you know, how do people get information? Where can we provide that information? So we can provide the information, the connections, the links around, we type people logged on or looked at, or surveyed. There was a lot of surveying, you did a lot of surveying at the beginning. We can provide that to you. I just caution that I don't, we're struggling with what's the right barometer of success.
Right.
And what we're finding out is it probably has to be multiple different types of engagement and then trying to pull all that together, so.
Well, look, it's probably been like the biggest frustration for me of four years of being on council is hearing from the community that they didn't know about something when we've put it out in 20 different ways.
Exactly.
So I get it. And people, if people really want to be involved, it's not hard to find the information and to get involved. So, I mean, and 10,000 comments on a general plan would be amazing, except there's 520,000 people living in the city, right? So, I mean, I, I get that. I, I just keep, I'm on social media a lot and so unfortunately, I'm seeing all the comments of all the things. And so people just are always claiming that they didn't get a chance to give input, that the city's making decisions without asking for citizen input, right? And that's so frustrating to me when I know that you guys have tried every different way to come at it. So, and transportation's one of those things that every single person in the city is affected by. And so it's just hard if we're making decisions based off of like the 100 people that decided to participate or whatever. But, I mean, that's, that's the way it is. I don't know. I don't even know what I'm getting at necessarily, but just that I, I just want to always try to be thinking of any way we can come at this to try to get more people to understand what's happening, so.
We would love that, too.
Yeah, I'm sure you would.
Thank you. Mr. Heredia.
I've mentioned this before, as far as technology, how do we embed technology to, especially on the transportation piece, you know, we've heard some of the industry, like Waymo and other autonomous vehicles that they've mapped out. I'm sure you met Mesa and other cities like three times over and other folks and you see apps, you know, like Waze and others on how that, how can we work both industry and internally on the use of technology and bringing innovation to, you know, our prior discussion around barricades or, you know, how do we look at our road structures, right? And so I just, something that I think is missing is that innovation around technology piece and maybe like moving forward, how do we, how do we work? I assume this is more behind the scenes on integrating those pieces into the plan-making or how do we, how do we look at ways to identify to our public these road closures better or? So I'm just thinking out loud here, like, how do we embed technology moving forward even further, working with industry and internally to use that, those tools that we have now to ensure that we both communicate better with the public, but also understand the roadways that we have, right? Because we can't do all, can we figure out ways to navigate that more efficiently, right? So just, just a comment on that end, but thank you. I think we've had many discussions, you know, in our sat committee and others on this Transportation Master Plan and thank you for your willingness to hear feedback and conversations to improve upon what we've had in the past. So appreciate the staff and your efforts, so.
So, oh, sorry, just to respond to that, Vice Mayor, technology is part of one of the goals and looking out 25 years, we don't necessarily know exactly what that technology looks like. We have been, especially on our traffic signal system side, working with industry and the hard thing is technology changes every three to five years and what we thought was happening in 2018 is not happening now in 2024, but we do have the commitment to keep up with it. We don't necessarily want to be the guinea pig with technology, but we want to be right there on the leading edge, so.
No, I'll echo what the Vice Mayor said. There's few things more frustrating than being stopped for a red light to have no cross-traffic, right? And then it's just belching carbon into the air for no reason other than just sit there. So I think Mesa actually does a better job than most other cities I've been in. There are a lot of intersections, so it takes time for this technology to be implemented throughout the city. But where it's been implemented, it's fantastic because I don't have to worry about stopping for absolutely no reason. But I'm really interested in exploring this concept when it comes to the mass transit section. So I remember going to an event and I was speaking at it and I had to wait for a ride shuttle and I saw a bus sitting there and had a bus driver in it and a trainer. And I thought, I'm not sure how long that guy's going to have a job in driving a bus because there's so much new technology. We, the Vice Mayor mentioned Waymo is one. Tesla is going to have a big event here in a couple of days probably to announce a robo-taxi. And we're looking at how you, how do we, how do we match up transit needs in the city? We just don't, we, we can't do it. We see, sometimes we see empty buses, for example. Sometimes the buses don't go where we need to. What about ADA dial-a-ride and trying to find drivers for dial-a-ride for citizens who can't get around? And I think that this technology, as it improves, we need to think about how we implement it in the city because I, I think it's far more efficient, far more effective, gets people to where they need to be rather than sticking the same route. I really think that transit is in for a sea change using technology to be far more effective. So it would behoove us to put a little bit of thought into how that's going to be potentially implemented, knowing what we know today under those limitations and also addressing that public safety question of, you know, driver's car, whatever hits something, so how do we, what are the safety measures that we want to put in? So it'd be worth our effort.
Yeah, Mayor, Councilmember Jody had a separate consultant put together the Transit Master Plan, so we can make sure we pass on your comments to her. What I will say is, I was working for Chandler when Waymo first came into the valley and one of the first questions we asked, so this is going back 10 years, right? And we asked, what do you need us to change in our infrastructure to accommodate automated vehicles? And they said, nothing. You know, we want to adapt to the existing world, which is why they spent so much time mapping, you know, the streets. One of the challenges I see is Mesa's large enough and we have the scale, you know, that we have a traffic management center, we have staff that do nothing, you know, but look at signal coordination and signal timing and make sure all our stuff is, but most of the country is not able to do what we can do, right? So, you know, if you go from, not picking anybody, but if you go from Mesa into Apache Junction, you know, or you go further, you know, especially the smaller communities, they're not in a position to have connected technology, you know, they may not even have well-coordinated signals, you know. So as Eric points out, you know, we do work with industry. We piloted a program a few years back with a subcontractor for Audi, you know, where our signal timing would be fed into people's cars and it would tell them, you know, the next signal is going to go red, you know, in a certain period of time. So we do look for those opportunities. We also are aggressive at sending our staff to conferences, you know, trying to follow. But as Eric points out, you know, the technology moves so fast, you know. I remember having a conversation with a former council member, it's like, yeah, you know, automated vehicles are coming in the next three years. And Eric and I were like, no, they're not coming in the next three years. You know, this is probably a five-year, six-year ago, you know, conversation, you know, and we, it's, it's taken a long time, you know. And they picked the valley to start because we have sun, we don't have snow, you know. How do those vehicles adapt in other parts of the country, you know? You know, so anyway, but we do, we are working hard to follow the technology and if we need to make changes, you know, we want to be on top of that if we can.
I was just going to say, that's interesting you say that because I was wondering why when I go into Phoenix, I get a countdown of the red light.
Yeah, we have, we have pedestrian timers.
Do you?
And they are for pedestrians. Now, I won't lie, I use it too, you know, because you're driving down the road and you see the ped timer with the countdown. You have to be careful because not every intersection that has a ped timer, when it hits zero, is going to go red, right? It depended on the location, it may stay green.
Yeah.
Lots of people use it, you know, for that purpose. And we actually have to explain to people, those are not intended to be vehicle countdowns. They're intended to let the pedestrians crossing the streets know what they're for, but that is something we hear a lot from folks.
I was talking about the red light, though.
Oh, sorry.
Where it gives you the, that technology is integrated with the car.
Oh, yeah, that's where we work.
Yeah.
Okay, sorry.
So, and, but, but we don't have it here in Mesa, right? I don't ever, it never pops up in Mesa.
We've given them all the information to be able to make, make it work. And I think this, this is one challenge that industry is having is the way Phoenix does it is a little bit different than the way that Mesa does it. And how do you integrate all this data to make your platform work? So we've provided them the information that we have that they, they have to then do some backend work to make it work.
You'll hear different terms, vehicle, vehicles, as smart vehicles will talk to each other. Then they have what's called B to I, which is called vehicle to infrastructure, and that's what you're talking about. So we have provided the information, but again, not all cities are in a position to even have the data, you know, to share. So it'll be interesting to see how that evolves.
Of course, we're talking about transportation. I always have lots to say. I'm talking about, I made all these notes on various subjects, but talking about technology and autonomous vehicles and I attended an event over the weekend and the biggest change, they said about autonomous vehicles, first of all, they feel like the technology right now is equivalent to the safety of the driver right now. So being an autonomous vehicle is no different from, you know, driving. But technology, the artificial intelligence of it is able to learn, continue learning. So as it continues and learns and more information is fed in, it's going to actually be safer because they're not, autonomous vehicles are not distracted, you know, they, they have information, they're totally, and so it was considered that autonomous vehicles and shuttles and all these things will actually be considered safer than drivers because of its knowledge and attention to everything beyond the human's attention span. And that the biggest change about having them on the road as far as autonomous vehicles is is more is on the lines of parking and especially parking garages. In the future, a council member from Philadelphia was saying he saw in his city, the envoys were moving away from parking garages because they saw the future in being more autonomous, where you have cars moving but not needing to park, that that was the long-term future. So they were pulling out of investments and not of, you know, parking garages and portfolios and, and not building new, you know. This is a very, looking into the future of where we're going, this isn't something that they're like shutting their parking garages right now. I don't want to give the impression that people, that there's a dramatic shift right now, but investments and such, they look into the anticipated future and how things will look. And so I think they're looking more at not needing a placement for vehicles to sit in our future as much as, you know, we do now, where we have parking lots where majority of time it just sits, especially in employment and issues. I'm going to jump around just because my notes end up being that way. Thank you for the street typologies. I think this is a dramatic change from where we were before. I'm really considering the, you know, the streets and what we're trying to accomplish. We talked about it many times ago. I know it's a huge amount of work to map the entire city and make these, you know, selections as the categories of what type of street it is and looking, I'm only made it halfway through the master transportation plan, but I see that each typology has, talk about lanes and widths and what needs to be accomplished in order to accommodate that street. I appreciate all your work on that and that it is integrating and sustainability and development services and planning. So there's that cross-section of everything coming together in silos, which was the traditional way of looking at transportation. Downtown is doing a mobility study and plan right now. So will that somehow be integrated? I don't know where, what is the timeline for adoption of this?
For the Transportation Master Plan, we're looking at adopting it by the end of the year. We're involved in the downtown multi, the study.
Yeah.
And so that's a lot more detailed study, right? The Transportation Master Plan, we're at 35,000 feet. You know, that, that gets down into street by street, block by block, what we're looking at.
So that area plan or something like that?
Yeah, correct.
We see in planning.
Yes.
Okay. Okay. Looking, looking, listening to Councilmember Summers and the concerns and the transportation needs there, cross-sections, I would say 479 is going to be, Proposition 479 on our ballot will be very important to being able to accomplish some of these things. Without it, it's a longer road, no pun intended. Without it, it's a longer road, no pun intended, than looking even at how we say near-term future and everything, that would be definitely stretched out. So, I can see the importance, as we look at these projects, that the funding for the projects that supported for 479. So, some, oh, sidewalks. So, my information that I gained over the weekend, you know, six-foot, a foot sidewalks are desirable, eight-foot sidewalks in TOD areas, and do we, I haven't completed the plan, do we have something, especially as we look at redesign of streets, if we do the streetcar, we're doing the streetcar, or along, there'll be development areas along the light rail, when we redo those streets or the properties?
Councilmember, and I'll let Eric talk more in detail, what I will say is, the wider the sidewalks we can get in, the happier I am. I really like wide sidewalks, especially along the arterials. A four-foot, five-foot sidewalk is very uncomfortable for pedestrians to, you know, walk along. So, again, in some cases, it goes back to how much physical space we have, but where we can have wider sidewalks, we do look to get wider sidewalks, you know, so.
I was just gonna say, I think we're involved in planning transit-oriented development plan, and to provide, you know, some of that input as we get into more details and start to look at specific areas, yes, we definitely, definitely look at those things.
Have we conducted or planned to conduct, do we do a sidewalk inventory, not only on widths, but on the conditions, so that we know where our priorities are on that? Sometimes I get complaints about ADA, a continuous area, so they're not in the street in between.
So, Councilmember, I don't even, 2018, 2019 timeframe, we conducted an ADA assessment of all of the arterial and collector streets in Mesa, so in that collected sidewalk condition, we've been trying to do annual improvements in locations that were identified as either missing or deficient, and we have programs to do that. So, we have a good idea of what's happening out there, there, you know, but things change, you know, one rainstorm can change what a sidewalk or a roadway looks like, and so we're constantly looking for those improvements and have programs to make those changes.
So, as far as in residential areas, should I just bring those forward, as people saying they have to go into the street?
If you have concerns, Councilmember, about a specific issue, please let us know, and we can let us, you know, let us take a look at it. From a maintenance standpoint, we typically will get a, you know, hear from a resident about a gap, you know, where there might be a shift in the sidewalk, and we have a team that can actually basically shave down them, it's actually a very cost-effective way, rather than having to replace whole sidewalks, but we then tend to look at the whole neighborhood, you know, so when we go into an area where we're aware there's an issue, we don't just go respond to that spot, we tend to look at the larger area to see if there's additional work that needs to be done. And this is where it helps, and we're still waiting for some equipment, but council authorized last year or the year before, right, losing track of time, you know, the addition of an in-house sidewalk crew. We have an external contractor that does the bulk of our concrete work, but there's long lead times, you know, so you'll see in the summer, especially where sidewalks get heaved, you know, and those are priority repairs, because the sidewalk's only as good as it's connected, you know, and that ties back to Eric's program, where he has a staff member that looks at gaps, and sometimes there's physical constraints to getting sidewalks in, but again, I love sidewalks, I love wide sidewalks, and we do work to add where we can.
Yeah, yeah, so, I've had complaints about lack of sidewalks, or a telephone pole in the middle of the sidewalk, and as far as having to, in a wheelchair, whatever, get off into the street, and sometimes around cars to get back on. Anyway, I'll bring those forwards, I encourage people to bring those forwards, so we can look at those neighborhoods and make it easier to connect. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Council, additional questions for these gentlemen? Councilmember Duff, a moment ago, mentioned Prop 479. A significant portion of 479 is streets and roads, so does the Transportation Master Plan assume that 479 is passing, or is it not contingent on?
The plan identifies needs, it doesn't identify funding.
Okay.
So, the reality is, even with Prop 479, there's gonna be more projects identified in the plan than likely funding is there to support that, and that's why we prioritize. There's no doubt 479 is critical, it's critical both for, you know, it's the whole, it's the whole network, it's freeways, it's our arterial streets, and it obviously has a major impact on transit, and so, you know, we did well the last time, you know, we specifically went to the voters with our Mesa moves, I was actually pleasantly surprised how many people went down ballot and voted yes in a general election, so we're hopeful that the same happens with Prop 479.
Okay, so we'll assess how much money we have after 479, and that will affect the implementation of the plan, but you're doing the plan regardless of the funding?
That's correct.
Okay.
And then, assuming Prop 479 passes, it's phased, as you know, Mayor, since you've been so involved at MAG, you know, there's various phases to the, to the program, you know, but we're working, for example, with ADOT, because they brought 24, you know, the next phase, you know, is part of, they're in design, you know, so we do work to coordinate even projects that aren't directly to cities.
Thank you.
I have one more question. How often do we update the transportation plan?
Every 10 years.
10 years, just like the gentleman. Okay, thank you.
All right, thank you very much, gentlemen. Oh, I'm sorry.
Sorry, just one last comment, I mean, I know I told you in SAT, but this was a lot of work, it's been a long, long time for you to work on it, we appreciate it, it's a great plan, that, all the new additions, I really appreciate having seen, I think the tracking's gonna be great, and coming to SAT and talking about, you know, what you're working on and what we're accomplishing on an annual basis, I think will be great too. I mean, as we know, there's a lot, we can't get to everything, but I think having that, that annual meeting and update is gonna be, is fantastic. There's, you have a hard job, right, trying to build the public right-of-way for every, all users, right, and for the safety and comfort of all years, all users, but I'm happy to see that we stay in the plan, that's a priority. I think when it comes to actual projects, right, it gets a lot more difficult to stay true to that goal and that priority, I would say, you know, when you, when we say we want a design for the most vulnerable user, I think that's great, I think, I think that's what we should be doing, but when the rubber hits the road, right, so to speak, a lot, sometimes it's very difficult to do, and I think, I guess what I'm saying, I understand the difficulty, I still am going to push for that priority, and I know that there are, when, again, when it comes to a specific project, I think, I think we can continue to do a little bit better on it, and get a little bit more creative, acknowledging that it's difficult, but I still think that we can continue to make that a priority, and get a little bit more where safety is first for everybody that uses the public right-of-way, so.
Thank you.
But thank you for all your work.
All right, thank you very much, gentlemen. Next item on our agenda, item three, is to acknowledge receipt of various meeting minutes. Is there a motion to that effect? Thank you, Ms. Pillsbury and Mr. Freeman. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion passes unanimously. Item four is current events and conferences attended. Councilmembers, anything you'd like to share with us? Mr. Freeman?
Okay, I'll beat the ladies, I think this time.
Go for it.
So, we had a coffee with the cop yesterday in District 1, and at Bock and Joe at Lindsay and University, really good turnout from residents in the area, and our police officers in Red Mountain District, so, thank you.
Candice.
Yes, and I attended the National Coffee with the Cop yesterday at T 7117 on South Mesa Drive here in downtown, great turnout, thank you for everybody, and thank you to our officers who do so much for our city. Tuesday, I attended an art space preview of an art exhibition called Women Only, and it is ongoing now, there's actually a opening reception on Saturday evening from 5:00 to 7:00, and it's paintings and such of influential women in Arizona, so it's well-done, and it's enjoyable and free.
Maybe even a picture of you.
Could be. That's why I brought it, I'm just kidding. It helps, being in the, it's from an artist who lives in art space, so that was very kind of her to include me. On Friday, I attended a mariachi assault in Mexico, Jose Hernandez concert that was put on by Desert Sounds, Desert Sounds is a nonprofit here in downtown that makes music education available to all children, appreciate all the work that they do, and this was funds to support that organization. On Thursday, last Thursday, I attended a mural reveal along Fellow Elementary, it was a couple of murals in their library, and it was painted by our District 4 artist, David Martinez, he's done murals throughout the city, and so, thank you to David for working with the school on that, and to Nicole Laba, who coordinated and put all this together, especially on the celebration. And then, last Thursday, Councilmember Pillsbury and Vice Mayor Heredia and I attended the International Day of Peace at Mesa Community College Rose Garden, and this Saturday afternoon, I think it's from 2:00 to 4:00, there's gonna be a celebration incorporating awards to students who made peace posters and poetry, and so, that'll be going on, and Dr. Ruth Lim is the lead on this, and she's done a lot of work in this, and we appreciate her. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Pillsbury.
Okay, I want to also comment on that really beautiful event that we had over at MCC, it was like 110 degrees for an outside event, it was awesome, but we were all just so full of love and peace that we didn't even notice. No, actually, it was horrible.
I was just saying.
It was so hot, it reminded me of when we did that 9/11 one at the amphitheater. Anyways, shouldn't bring it up, but it was so beautiful, it was such a beautiful event.
They all sang together?
What? We were all, we all sang? We did, we all sang together, it was so beautiful, and I just kept thinking, if we could get more of that in our community, the world would be a better place. It was, it was a really beautiful event, so I wanted to thank anyone that was part of that. We had several of our city staff there, which was great. Also, I wanted to mention, since we were with our school district last Thursday for our meeting, which I really appreciate getting to meet with them, and just really focusing on the different ways that we can connect with them and collaborate to make our city safer and better, is amazing, but because we were there, we didn't get to talk about last week either, but last Tuesday was our Mesa Youth Climate Action Fund Event, and that was at the studios, where we acknowledged students in the district who have put forward these great projects for climate action, and received funding from Bloomberg philanthropies for, to work on these projects, so I'd love when we can bring teenagers and their viewpoint into things that will affect all of us. Also, last Thursday was the Mesa Family Resource Center grand opening at the library, and it was packed, and it was so fun, there were so many people there, I think the community is really, really excited to have that resource center there at the library in such a great location, and so many great partnerships with Mesa Public Schools and First Things First, am I forgetting any other partners? Anyways, it's just, that's a great, I'm really excited about that. Saturday, Councilmember Freeman and I got to attend ASA Now, their gala, fundraising gala, Alex Boye was there, and this is a great organization over in East Mesa, but helps foster kids and foster families, and they also are starting a school called Shade Tree Academy that is for trauma, kids that have experienced trauma, to help them get through school, and that was a really neat event. And then, Tuesday morning was our East Valley Men's Center groundbreaking for the transitional housing that Councilmember Freeman and the mayor spoke at, and really excited to get, see that that's getting started. The bridge housing, I said, yeah, so their bridge housing project that will be there for 30 units, and I think that will be huge, so really excited about that as well.
Great, thank you. I, amen to everything that's been said, those were some wonderful events. I was at an event, I believe, it might have been yesterday, day before, naming a downtown central station, transit station for Congressman/Mayor Greg Stanton, that was a great event, and excited to be part of that great system, and to celebrate the success of launching that wonderful facility. I've been participating in some national meetings, the Electric Vehicle Working Group that I serve on, met this week virtually, and then, last night, we had a, Mayor Woods from Tempe, and I hosted an event at a Red Mountain Ranch Country Club, talking about the Disagree Better initiative that we're promoting, so that we can be more civil in the way that we conduct ourselves during, particularly during elections, and in this kind of heated political climate that we find ourselves in. So, appreciate people supporting that event last night. Council, anything else you'd like to share with us? Mr. Brady, what does our schedule of future meetings look like?
See you Monday, Mayor, 5:15 study session, followed by the City Council meeting.
Great, thank you, that concludes our agenda. Is there a motion to adjourn? Thank you, Mr. Summers, all in favor, please say aye. Aye. Thank you, we are adjourned.